We got one minute.
Okay.
Yeah, see, we need you.
You need me, oh my gosh. Somebody needs me.
Bill, yes.
Like gas.
Special.
Careful.
I felt bad about that.
About meeting the order. That's the motion to make Jan their second minutes. Okay, all in favor?
Wait.
Hold on, on the second round, second.
One, two, Jan.
Hi, Charlie. Okay.
Woo, that was. One, two, three.
We got four of us and there's seven.
Rotell, move the minutes to their second.
Move back in the minute. There we go.
Yeah, we're all right.
We're all right. Right. Oh.
He lost it. Just wanted to follow along.
Everybody's got one minute.
Okay. All right, so last month. Supervisor Hogan had. The best starting to charge for fire inspections. So I did some homework over the last month here to try and come up with a. Cedars were doing now. Guys wanna take a look at the. List on there. So what we would start off is three months before the schedule and inspection. I can run a report in our software. And kick out the letters that are on the flip side of your, they're. Pick out the letters saying that. You know, you've got a expected inspection date of whatever it is. If they call us right back and we get that set up, all good. If not, then that would be going out regular mail. If they don't call us back, we'll send it out again two weeks later, certified mail. If they still don't, which I'm anticipating this. It's gonna be more common. Where we get steps three and four. Then we would send out a third one with the final notice. If they still don't respond to us. Then the date that we have on that letter, we would show up. For I surprise, even though I told them three times. But that's the day we're gonna be there. Then in the red letters there, different things that we would do, you know, if they're not ready, we show up, they're not ready or did it and they didn't pass. There would be a reinspection and no additional charge. That would be part of the seventy five dollars. Seventy five dollar charge to begin with. If there was no answer or they refused let us in, then we would be sending out a violation. Local code and state code both have requirements in there for how often we're supposed to do the fire inspections. So we would send out a violation that will give them thirty more days, wired by law. And then if they still didn't. It would be an appearance ticket to. Go to court, so. Do you have any questions on that? So.
I start with it. These are commercial. Right? Mental businesses.
It would be, it would also be a. Free of parking units or more.
Okay. And I see that you have down the seventy five dollars. I mean, we're. We're, you have a person taking the time to send out regular mail. We have the cost of certified mailing. Two times and the person taking the time to do that. Is seventy five dollars enough? I mean, you haven't even got to the inspection yet, right? You know, we're doing all this with. Like the cupboard, maybe even have lots of, just ask, that's enough.
Oh, I'm sure probably you heard here, but. The response. You're looking for a response to make an appointment for their inspection? Correct. Cause what we're currently doing is. We're reaching out to everybody, making lots of phone calls and leaving lots of messages and waiting for return phone calls and things. This way we can hit everybody. At the same time, it's on a schedule. At the beginning of each month, there's some reports I already do. This just be another one. So hopefully, once. People get beyond that initial one. It's a little easier and. Less active soon.
Is the inspector. In charge of keeping those records? As, or I mailed out one and I went to step two or where is it?
If you look, if you look down at the bottom, still working out the details. How to efficiently track responses, no responses. So still working through that.
Question is, we talked about this before and we sort of looked up in the air. Are we gonna charge nonprofits? Are we gonna charge? Religious organizations? That was sort of the up year before, wasn't it?
We never have. We haven't charged churches, we've got charged nonprofits.
We have a charge fee for fire inspections, period.
Well, like permits and things. But actually, we have charged permanent things or charges.
Big fire inspections. And we never had, we haven't charged anybody for especially. So this is not in around.
Can't get clearly Jay, but I'm not sure it's not funny. So a lot of big work pushing, time obligation, and they get too basically a suspension and a reinspection. Cause if you show up and they're not ready. Then you're just leaving and then you're gonna show up again. So that's another person's time. And they're always getting that type of charge.
And this is for three years, correct?
Some of them are every year assemblies.
Okay.
I think that's the reason Cassie's point is he want a reinspection fee. Yeah, go back.
We can absolutely do that.
All of the. Nate, what you got?
What if? You send out your first notice and people correspond right back to you. Say the seventy five and every time you do a mailing, then it goes up twenty five or thirty dollar increments. Every time you got to go to the next step, all of the price go up.
Or send it out at eighty five dollars, do ten dollars on it. Everybody.
I think. That sounds like a good idea. Nate started with basic and if you have to keep chasing them, you gotta keep something going.
And spell that right out in the first letter.
You know, if you gotta chase them, it's gonna cost them.
Right.
So first letter would be like seventy five dollars is what we say. The second letter.
Twenty five more.
Third letter.
Twenty five more.
Then if you get there and there's no show, another twenty five right here.
You mean, one of the. Questions. If you look at the no answer or the refuse to entry. So we send out the order, order to remedy. So with the arm. They still don't respond to us, we would normally send out, cause it's a violation, we would normally send out an appearance ticket, show up in court. Can we require, if it gets to that point, can we require? A, an additional two hundred dollar port fee or whatever, because now we're. Spending way more time. Is, is, that is maybe new. Now.
We put that on as a surcharge? If they end up in court, is that possible?
It's possible. I mean, at that point, you can ask the court to, or can impose a judgment saying, okay, you're liable for. All the expenses leading up to this bill. So can we say two hundred for that? Yes.
In addition to the other, and on top of it. Back to you, Professor.
Well, it's been. Probably gaining on thirty years since they last taught criminal procedure law, but then we mail an appearance ticket.
It's civil revenue, it's not criminal.
Okay. So it says appearance. It was one of the.
Actually call his sons for him.
One of the question I might ask. You've got a server appearance.
That's thirty years ago.
And then first, firstly, yes, and it's been thirty years.
I would change. And I was just gonna pick on you, Bob, but this is.
Any other question?
I'll catch you after. I could say something about a horse, something is already. I wanted to.
You're next, your additional inspection fee. Go ahead. I just wanted to know if. Like, once you get to step four. Would you have the authority to tell them? You have to close your doors until. Your place is inspected and, and passes inspection. For all remedies are, are. Handled.
I think generally from a due process standpoint, if you get to step four, if. You have to give, you have to give them an opportunity to remedy. I mean, even if they don't let you in, say. Here's your, here's your last chance. I think, once you go to court after that, if they don't respond to that, I think that, yeah, yeah. So we could ask the judge. He's gonna. We can ask for anything. Question, can ask for any.
But there's no way to write that in. Right? Can't write that in. You can only ask the judge for that.
I would, I would prefer to have court orders saying we can do it. Right. Doing it ourselves. And probably end up going to court. Really? Try that.
So could, could we word that where. If, if you don't respond on the fourth time. A summons will be issued and. We will be seeking an order from the board to closure.
All right. If you look, if you look at number four at the top there. That's where I put it. No, number three. Failure to respond stamp on the letter, I can, I can put it into that. So basically be sending out the letter and then I'll have a stamp for that. Put on there and it said, can say something on those lines. Yeah, I, you, you probably wanna put a warning saying, you know, failure, failure to respond to this.
Could result, could result.
Result.
Could result in.
And so that would be could result in.
Close your foreclosure.
Right. Enclosure of your business and any other remedy that's available.
Unfortunately, I think we're gonna have to see that before people realizes. It's being taken seriously. Purbage of that month. Next month, you'll bring us back to cleaning without your, you rebel. If what you got to. Just worked it out there.
All right. So reinspection fee. What do we wanna charge for that? Cause what we, what we usually have now, what the building permits. Okay, somebody calls up and they want an inspection tomorrow morning at eight. Get out there at eight, it's not ready. The way that it's written up in the fee schedule. They get basically one freebie like that. Or one freebie if they have to correct something back. After that. We charge things fifty. In current. As I could have every your time, I think that's, that's the question. I think there is obviously. At least from the sounds of the room, there's a big difference between someone who's cooperating and has something that has to get fixed as opposed to someone who keeps. Putting off.
So what's feeling in the committee? Do you want one freebie or do you want fifty dollars on the first, first freebie?
I, I think there should be one opportunity to. Remedy it, you know. And. That's gonna be for the people that are trying to cooperate. We already established what happens to the people that aren't, that cooperates.
So one freebie and then after that, if they have come back again, is that big?
That's why I say.
Yeah, Nate.
Only thing I would change is. If someone calls to make an appointment, you get there. They have not notified you. And they just. Don't show off. They don't get a freebie. But if you get there and. Something needed to be corrected, then I would say that would be a freebie. When they, if they keep, if they're gonna waste your time. So. And can't make contact with your office to say something came up, I can't be there. I charge them again.
Well, I think that works, him showing up, that's the freebie and if they're not there.
Yeah, but I, I'm just saying that.
They're not there, they gotta go back again anyway, so then they're gonna get it. Which, which is covered under the rules we just started talks about for. Not a complaint. We don't get that freebie if you're not alive.
Okay, so if we show up. They're there, they need a correction. No charge for that second visit. We show up, nobody's there. Then.
That was their freebie.
We're, that was the charge, we're charging the. And what do we, what do we wanna do on that?
One hundred fee. You start on seventy five. The next step's a hundred. You get there and they're not there, so then. There would be a hundred, right?
On top of the seventy five.
Twenty five on top of the seventy five. Well, you.
Instead of seventy five, either way, you're, you're charging fifty on your revisits.
For your, right now, right? I mean, we could keep it simple and, you know, leave it at fifty.
That way nobody is confused.
That's the same for all.
In my. Research in this. There were two places, I don't remember where they were at the moment, two local. Folks. Municipalities that used to charge. That no longer charge because it was basically spending a lot of time tracking all of this stuff down. Folks. So just to give you a heads up, that might. Be. That might come around. Okay.
So this is computerized or someone totally repeated?
Yeah.
No way to do the track?
Yeah. But the folks that aren't paying are the ones that are gonna be paying next, that's gonna figure out. Right? A lot more paperwork, a lot more time and. Possibly summons, parents tickets for the.
Well, they don't get it. They don't get it passed unless they pay, right?
Right.
Might be a dumb question. Have we had issues in the past with businesses? Is that why we're implementing all these additional charges? I thought at one point we were able to do the. Inspection very timely.
We, we haven't. Able to do all that we're supposed to be doing this. With the software, still working with municipality, trying to get that all streamlined. Handled down. And then we hired the second person. So I'm anticipating us getting back on track.
So we're not doing this because we've had issues?
No, Supervisor Hogan felt that since we were committing manpower time to it, it's like any other inspection that we ought to have a B.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is gonna be a dumb question. Could you? Restate what you said, you checked with other municipalities and they stopped doing it?
They, they had been charging and it got to be such a hassle for them. Tracking everybody down to get the payments that they just didn't forget.
They, they just stopped.
And there was an office that could track open and.
There ain't no guy.
No guy.
If you were to look at my, my first draft of this, I wrote down treasurer, question mark, but I didn't put it on this one.
So you got that close to me and tell them to the boss.
Anything else, Chad?
All right, so fifty dollar reinspections.
I have that as one question. You're with Dan or Stephen Treger. And we, re levy unpaid. Fines and, and. Things added to taxes.
If it's a court fine, I would say no, cause they can actually reduce that through the judgment. Our stuff. I don't think we've ever done it in the past, I wouldn't know. Usually I, I would, my initial gut reaction would be no, but I have to look into it.
If. They don't have the. Fire inspection permit, then they really shouldn't be open for business right on.
Right.
For the incorrect way from wrong, you. It, it might not be able to go on and write property tax, but with perclus from. Would it alien the property for civil judgment? That if the property ever sold or whatever, we would have to leave.
That, that, that one, that's different issue.
Those are.
Go ahead, yeah. The town hall. You and I expect that.
What's up, sorry?
Town hall, would you, would that be in a line for inspection? Okay, now say I have. Mahoney notifyers. And they inspect every. So we gotta double that or are you charging municipalities or how's that?
They would be inspecting components of things. We would be doing the overall. Looking at the overall package, they might be saying, okay, it's security systems working or if you had a sprinkler, all right, those would be separate third party inspections. That we would have to have proof that they were done and they're up to date when they show up to the work.
Are we gonna have a disclaimer on there that the waivers are not accepted? You have to. Approval order, you know, no waivers authorized or. How are we gonna handle that?
But. You can be an example.
Yeah, so somebody comes in with their supervisor and the supervisor's supposed to get a break, he's got this problem, that problem, whatever, or they say they don't have the money. Is it gonna be some waiver board or is already gonna have to do them girls? I think if it's, if it's not gonna be waiver board, we're not gonna give anyone authority to do that.
Yeah.
Then I think we ought to have that in there.
Yeah, but. Do we take on? Any brisk responsibility of. Giving a waiver and then there is an issue with a fire and people are in.
Well, if you say no, no, it's not, but it's not a waiver.
Yes, right, okay.
We're not, we're not taking that risk, we're taking ourselves out of that.
Fine, Brent, just put the waiver, what's the following up here? We could have a supervisor in charge of waivers.
Anything else, Chad?
Uh, yes, a quick thing, the two hundred dollar port fee, would that actually come to the cap? It's part of our. Expenses. Yeah. Okay. Cause I know that. Previous times, for occasion. Ain't that be the request for a cost that we're dealing our. Right. That's what I'm saying is I, I don't. Trying to look to the people that aren't doing it. Simple. Right, all right. Anything else?
Yeah.
One more.
Just one more question. So the villages, you notify the villages about this as well or? I know we're finding out a supervisor, but you got bears out there. They run a whole different operation. And I would like to make sure in my village that well, bears are aware, so I don't have those people running to these supervisors or those businesses within the village.
Well, actually I do have another. Question for everybody to relate to that. What I had wanted to do is to start the actual charges in twenty twenty six. So that I could start educating. Between now and then. But as far as notifying the villages. The letter would go out with that information to whoever, you know, for your contact and you had this or whatever, so that they would know that. You know, if we were inspecting, you know, village hog or something.
But I mean, the, I mean, the. The businesses within the village. Like in forty eight, you got Duncan donuts, you got called on fire and you got a brewery.
Yeah.
That, that would be a point of the.
The village, where it was making follow up with these.
Well, they're getting a three month. Notice there in that first letter, so.
My question is, we are here, Representative Towns. There's nobody here for the village to hear exactly what John is saying, the mayor's, the town board, or the village boards, whatever the case may be.
There's nobody here for the village to hear exactly what John is saying, the mayor's, the town board, or those boards, whatever the case may be. I think they need to know the same thing that we're here. Because they're the ones that are gonna have to pass it out.
I'm not saying, in fact, if they have a village code, are we still doing the fire inspections? See, that's, I wanna make sure we're not giving the wrong message, that's what I'm worried about.
Anybody that has given the responsibility to the county, county's the one that handles fire inspections. So if they have a village code that says they do it, I don't think anybody does.
Then you don't handle that from your department.
If it was a village code, then there are gonna be fire inspections, I don't, I don't think anybody has that.
So even the ones that have their own code enforcement, you'll be doing the fire.
No, they, they do their own, cause, because code enforcement handles the fire inspections. So if they have their own code enforcement. Yeah, so it's.
Hudson Falls Village, isn't it?
Ford Edward, Town and Village, Kingsbury, Hudson Falls and. Thank you. Thank you, yeah.
Hey, we go to alternative sentencing.
I just have one request and it was not on my travel plan. We normally do not attend the state probation officers association uh training, however, this year. Uh one of my staff has been invited to be part of a panel at the um this conference. And as part of that panel, she, the co- the association was paying for one night plus one day of the conference. She would like to stay for that second day of the conference and spend uh the second night. Because there are some topics that would be beneficial for her to attend. So I'd like permission to send her, be able to send her to the conference. We do have dollars remaining in our um training budget line and our travel budget line. And the conferences in July.
Their motion, eight minutes, second stat, any discussion? On favor, I?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sign counsel next.
Civil request, we did this in November, we did pass the committee, we had the family uh defense grant, it's for Article ten. Procedures, we were given funding, three quarters of the million dollars for three years of the state aid in the defense of Article tens. We're able to hire a social worker intake person and use money towards vouchers, and all we want is a simple line so we can. Direct that funding through a separate line. I just did get, this was passed in November, went to finance and it was tabled in finance.
Okay, is there a motion to move with finance? Backed by John, questions?
Al, you having issues with that?
No, my, my best guess, I don't remember exactly, my best guess is that it did go to finance in November. Because it was so close to the twenty twenty-five fiscal years that we would have had to roll the whole thing back over again in two months. My guess is that's why it didn't take any action in November, but I don't remember that for a fact. So it's just, it's just a regular grant with amendment that we was in finance.
On favor, I, oh, thank you.
You have anything else before we have to go?
Yes, just the uh canal grants and annual grant that pays for. Hours for our light to light patrol, what's in, will control basic deputies, so.
Motion to move that grant finance, moved by Scott, second by Nate, questions? On favor, I?
Thirty-seven thousand dollars.
And then Jen's next issue? We'll need a motion, so go ahead.
Regarding the voting control, are you, is the county, they're doing the enforcement of the. Mandatory training for all the stickers and voices things or no votes at all? No, that's, that's mandatory this year.
No, we don't, we don't have a part of that. I'm not sure, that's what, I think it's uh.
Way we all spend it. It does, I don't, DUC is not reimbursed for any voting stuff. They don't, you know, their main focus is not gonna be. Parks track law.
We do snowmobile training, kids, but.
Well, this, this year it's mandatory, everybody that runs a mortgage has gotta have. Either their card or their certification under license. And I haven't found anybody so far that says they're going with horses. Well, John's gonna be pissed when he had him sit in class for a whole day, if nobody's gonna look at his lady. That's what my hand was apart. Get the lawn and drive a boat, now without a license, so who's gonna write the ticket for that? Whoever owes me over.
Bob, would I seen him sit down on Katz Union and inspect the boats there, the licensing on the boats, would the same people be checking licenses for?
Maybe, the only ones I've heard that said they're actually gonna write tickets for is the fleet toward the park. So, I, I wasn't trying to put down spots, yeah, I just wondering if on the radar.
No, I thought you asked for who's gonna do the train.
Oh, no, no, the, the training is. There's plenty of training, as soon as gonna jack them on the water, make sure they get places.
Yeah, I think we'd probably give them a reminder that they have to have that. I wanna speak for.
Uh just a statement. The Lake George Park Association is going to, or is gonna write tickets for that. But just so we know. If you rent a boat over there, you don't need to, both throw an eight-hour course, you can rent a boat. Go out for eight hours, do whatever you'd like.
Just for. That's cause there's, there's money for extra investigation.
Okay, any, anything else here?
So we need a motion to go into executive session, moved by Scott, backed by John and Dan will know.
Reason is for contract negotiations.